There's a lot of breathing going on.
Might be me.
Are we, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
This meeting is being called for order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Pursued to Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, Chapter thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, Posted on the first floor bulletin board in the city hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city website. The report will be taken by all clerks.
Yes, I now call the roll. Mr. Blakely. Somebody's getting a lot of feedback. I'm getting feedback from Mr. Delisle, actually. Mr. Delisle, can you mute yourself, sir? Thank you. Councilman Blakely, are you present, sir? Councilmember Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, present.
Okay. If anybody who is not on council can please mute their phones. I would greatly appreciate that. Councilman Harrison?
Present.
Councilman Michelle?
Present.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Vaughn? Councilmember Blakely, have you arrived?
I am present.
Thank you. Councilman Vice President Caldwell Wilson, we're getting a lot of feedback from your phone. I apologize. I know it's hard. We have new equipment on the way. Councilman Blakely is here. Councilman Vaughn, have you arrived? Councilman Vaughn? Council President McBride?
Present.
Form is formed. And I call the directors. Mr. Cruz? Mr. Cherry? Mr. Manali? Excuse me, sir?
Sally Samuel on behalf of the Law Department?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Director Colley?
Present.
Director Mazer?
Present.
My apologies, Mr. Clerk. This is Colin Cherry. I'm present.
Thank you, sir. Director Delisle?
Present.
And I believe there is a new Health and Human Services Director. And I apologize, I had, I received the email, but I don't recall the name. Director, is the new director for Health and Human Services present?
My name is Adela Lopez. This is Maria Richardson. Her name is Adela Lopez.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lopez, are you present, ma'am?
Mr. Clerk, I, I apologize. This is Adam. This is Adam Cruz. I, I had technical difficulties logging in, though I am present.
Very good, sir. I mark you as such. Mr. Director Onatiri? Director Richardson?
Present.
Thank you. Director Levinburg?
Present.
And Director Shouenah?
Present.
Council President, all of the directors are accounted for except as noted. Would you like me now to proceed to the presentations?
Is Mr. Bridges, um, present?
Uh, no, ma'am. Sally Samuel from the Law Department is representing the Law Department this year to the best, to this evening. To the best of my knowledge, Mr. Bridges is not present, but if he is, please speak up, sir. I don't believe he's here, ma'am. Ms. Samuel, can you confirm whether he's here or not?
Um, Mr. Conlon, I don't see him listed in the group of people, and I'm the only one that responded when you called the Law Department.
Okay, very good, ma'am. Um, the Housing and Economic Development presentation has been actually canceled. Mr. Delisle had asked that that be pulled and rescheduled for later date due to the unavailability of one of the professionals. And I sent an email earlier on that. The only other thing we have is the actual end of the Trenton City Holiday Presentations, and we just have a couple more that Council President wanted to note for the record of people who have just reached out and assisted the city during the holiday season and during COVID-nineteen. And I'm going to share my screen, and we're going to show you the first of the holiday presentations is for Detective Tamika Veal. In recognition of your dedication to protection of the citizens of the city of Trenton, and for your assistance in volunteering, for your time to provide assistance to distribute food to those in need. Uh, thank you very much for that. In addition to, who also showed up to distribute food for the food trucks is Detective Steve Garzio. And in recognition of your dedication to the protection of the citizens of the city of Trenton, and for your assistance in volunteering your time to provide assistance to distribute food to those in need, as well as Detective Glendy Quaheda. And Detective Quaheda also showed up to deliver the food trucks in recognition of your dedication to the protection of the citizens of the city of Trenton, and for your assistance in volunteering your time to provide assistance to distribute food to those in need. The city council wanted to recognize the three of you for showing up to unload the food trucks during the holiday season so that people can be fed. And the Council President also wanted to present on behalf of the Trenton City Council, and this we're going to post on the website with Mr. Paul. A recognition from the employees of the city of Trenton for your tireless dedication to the city of Trenton for ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of her citizens, for dedication and professionalism during adversity, and for having the courage and fortitude to keep doing so in the face of the pandemic. Thank you for all of you. To the Trenton City Council, extended sincere gratitude for your dedication and commitment. This January fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. So this will be posted for all the, all the employees to download on the website once the Council President signs it. Uh, and they wanted to let you know how much they appreciate you. And shall we proceed to the docket review? Would you like to say a few words?
No, you may proceed. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. First up on the docket, I do have to notify you that the minutes are being pulled. My review of the minutes says they were drafted. They were, uh, that they have to be reworked. So I do apologize for that. We are working on that process. And it is being addressed. So the, uh, the minutes for June fourth to eighth and July second will be presented at the next meeting. Uh, there will be three communications implications from the clerk's office. Uh, there will not be a financial report until the second meeting. And there are no ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Uh, the walk-on ordinance from last will be heard at the next meeting due to advertising requirements. Uh, first we have as far as resolutions. Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero one. A resolution granting renewal of alcohol beverage planary retail consumption license number one-one-one-one dash thirty-three dash zero-nine-six dash zero-zero-four JM Urina Inc. for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one licensing period. Uh, this is a pocket license. Uh, consent agenda, ma'am?
Yes.
Health and Human Services. Uh, Dr. Lopez is the new director, uh, for Resolution twenty-seven forty-one. Resolution authorizing the city of Trenton to accept the option to extend a shared services agreement with the county of Mercer to the Mercer County Office on Aging, two thousand and twenty-one Older American Act. Social Services Block Grant for the socialization and recreation for four senior centers for the city of Trenton's senior population.
Does anyone have any questions pertaining to twenty dash seven forty-one?
Yeah.
You may continue.
I can say. Yes, ma'am. Uh, next we have, next we have Resolution twenty-seven forty-two. A resolution authorizing the city of Trenton to accept the option to extend a shared services agreement with the county of Mercer through the county, through the Mercer County Office on Aging, two thousand and twenty-one Older American Act, Social Services Block Grant for the financial support of care management.
Is there any questions from the body? There's no questions. We may, um, add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolutions from the Department of Water, Sewer, Mark Levinburg, Acting Director. First, we have Resolution twenty-seven fifty-four. A resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract to Ducon Inc. for the replacement of Metropolitan M-dash ninety-four ductile iron fire, ductile iron fire hydrants for the city of Trenton, Department of Water and Sewer in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-six thousand, forty dollars through bid twenty-twenty-eighty.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Council.
Can we roll call this one?
Roll call, yes.
Well, not a question, but a comment on this one. Because a while back, I remember that we had a bunch of fire hydrants that were supposed to be changed through the city. Uh, and it was done by the small crew that we had at Water Works at that time. So now, the reason for the contract is because we don't have enough, enough workers. So what is going on?
That question will be from Mr. Levinburg. Mr. Levinburg?
Yes, uh, Madam President, if you would like me to answer that?
Yes, correct.
All right, so I do believe we did have a resolution up there recently for the purchase of Metropolitan Fire Hydrants. Um, this is to supplement our crew to work on hydrants. Um, currently, we have forty hydrants that are out of service. Uh, we were able to get three of those replaced by our crews this week. Um, but that's just an unacceptable amount of fire hydrants to have out of place. Uh, and I believe they, they've done this contract annually uh, to supplement our crew in replacement of the fire hydrants. Um, we do save a lot of money on this because we actually do supply the hydrant. The hydrant costs approximately the same amount as to have the installation, but um, you know, it's quite relevant and very important to the city, particularly the fire department, that they have reliable fire hydrants when they need them in case of a fire.
You all call it. Alrighty. That's roll call. Um, Clerk, Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero-two. A resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract to King and George LLC to provide answering services for emergency services during non-working hours at Trenton Water Works, three thirty-three Cortland Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, oh eight six three eight, in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars for a period of two years at two hundred and fifty dollars per month through bid twenty-twenty-seven three.
Is there any questions from the body? You may add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. And the last resolution on the docket is Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero-three. Resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for additional one year ordered to George S. Coin Chemical for the furnishing and delivery of coagulant and polymer in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents at a unit price of six hundred and one dollars, point six 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 seven cents per drum for twelve thousand gallons through bid two thousand and nineteen dare seventy-five.
President McBride? Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, for to add a resolution authorizing, uh, city council to, to.
Councilman, we are on twenty-one dash zero zero three. If any of the, uh, body has any questions for this resolution. Does any, any member of, of the body have any questions? Seeing if there's no questions from the body, this may be moved to the consent agenda, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Say it over.
President McBride, I, is this the appropriate time to make the motion for the resolution to add to the docket?
Uh, yes, this would be the appropriate time.
Um, so as I mentioned, I'd like to add a resolution authorizing city council to issue a rights notice to the municipal clerk, Matthew Conlon. I actually sent this email, uh, this resolution by email to, uh, members of the council. If you, uh, would prefer, I'd like to read it in record. And then, uh, see if I can get a second, and we could vote to see if it's going to be added, uh, the docket for Thursday.
If you would like, uh, read it into the record, you can.
Thank you. We're at Matthew Conlon, here and after Mr. Conlon is currently employed as the municipal clerk for the city of Trenton, New Jersey. We're at several employees of the city of Trenton, here after the city has alleged that Mr. Conlon has created a hostile work environment while in performance of their duties as employees of the city. We're at the council, the city council in closed session to discuss matters involving the evaluation of performance of a city employee in accordance with NJSA ten-four dash twelve B, unless the employee requests that the discussion be held in open session and therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Trenton as follows. Number one, the city council of the city of Trenton hereby resolves to issue a rights notice to discuss Mr. Collins' performance as the municipal clerk, specifically as it relates to allegations of a hostile work environment led by, but led by, rather, by employees of the city of Trenton. And the city council of Trenton hereby resolves to enter into executive session to discuss this matter unless Mr. Collins requests that the discussion be held in open session.
Please note my objection for the record. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, um, the, uh, would you take a vote for the, uh, for that, uh, motion?
Yes, ma'am. A motion by Director Blakely to introduce. I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Is that going to call the roll, ma'am?
Yes, please.
And I call the roll for the vote. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes. Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson?
No.
Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson votes no. Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison votes yes. Councilmember Michelle?
No.
Councilmember Michelle notes no. Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez votes no. Councilmember Vaughn? Have you arrived, Councilmember Vaughn? Councilmember Vaughn is absent. Council President McBride?
No.
Council President McBride votes no. The motion fails.
No, for the public, uh, for the public comment, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Public portion has been opened by the Council President. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please limit your comments to the docket items only as presented this evening. Uh, does anyone wish to be recognized? Uh, the time limit is ten minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Uh, Council President, first we have, uh, Ms. Jonette Smart, uh, who's seeking resignation, recognition.
Yes, definitely.
Ms. Smart, please state your name and address for the record and be recognized. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Jonette Smart. I live at, uh, two oh nine Oliver Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Um, thank you, Madam President, for acknowledging me. Happy New Year to all. I got on when I heard the Councilwoman, uh, Blakely's, um, motion to.
That's not a part of the docket. That is not a part of the docket, Ms. Smart.
I'm sorry. I said I had just got on. I'm sorry. I didn't understand that. Okay, well, then I'm gonna keep my comments then till the next time.
Alrighty, thank you.
Next, Council President, we have Jasmine Crawford.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Crawford.
Hi, good morning. Um, thank you, Madam President, for accepting my comment. Um, I'm sorry. Name is Jasmine Crawford. I live at five twenty-four Birch Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, zero eight six two nine. I'm not sure I'm speaking at the appropriate time, but what I was reaching out to was about the park across the street from my home. Um, in October, a storm came. Is it appropriate, or?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be more appropriate for Thursday. This is only on docket items, ma'am.
This is on docket items only, Ms. Crawford.
There is a public portion on Thursday? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On Thursday, be happy to have. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thursday.
Uh, and once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is for docket items only for tonight's meeting. Uh, next we have Maurice Hallit.
Yes.
Um, I just want to interrupt briefly. It's Councilwoman Robin Vaughn, West Ward. I just joined.
Yes, ma'am. I'll note you for the record, arriving at five forty-nine P.M.
There's no comment from Maurice Hallit. That was, uh, him was raised in an accident.
Uh, thank you very much, sir. Uh, are there any other comments for public portion? Council President, I see none of the comments for public portion.
Yes, um, uh, then we will move straight to civic comment?
A motion to close public portion?
Oh, definitely.
Motion by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Rodriguez. All in favor?
Yes, all right, so.
How are? Any opposed? So, thank you. Next, we'll move to civic comment portion.
Yes. And, and we'll go, uh, straight to Councilwoman Vaughn for a civic comment and move down.
Can you go, can you go past me? I'll come, come back to me, please, Council President?
Well, uh, Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, uh, what I have was a, a question for Director Colley from the Police Department.
Is Director Colley on?
I'm getting feedback.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez is going to pose a question to you. Just wanted to make sure that you won. She is on, ma'am.
Okay, I, I'd like to know the status of that assessment that was supposed to be done at the radio room.
The, um, consultant is finishing up, um, his written document. We did meet with him, uh, by Zoom right before the, uh, Christmas holidays. Um, is pretty much the, um, outcome is what we expected, that the, um, equipment that we have is inferior, and it will have to be replaced. That's the, um, a summary of what the, um, discussion was. Uh, what he will include in his package is, uh, what it will actually cost the city in order to move to, um, a reliable, a more reliable, um, system. And, um, the problems that he found with the old system. Um, so it will give us, um, two tracks, um, to follow as what's going on with the current system, what he recommends, the new system, and, um, recommendations for the type of equipment that we should have. We should have that in writing, um, hoping within the next week or so. And as soon as I have it, then I will make sure that every council member has it as well.
That, that is great. Also, that, uh, what you call, uh, old equipment is not so old. It's only about four to five, uh, four years old. So if, if it was inferior quality, wh- wh- what is going to happen? Because we pay millions for that.
Um, Councilman Rodriguez, I really don't have, um, an answer for that, um, at this moment. I would, um, prefer that we all read the, um, document as to the, um, recommendations of the, um, consultant.
Okay, good enough. Council, Council. That's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Michelle?
I think it is time. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
All I can say is, my council colleagues should be embarrassed. Now, we didn't even do a right tonight, um, to find out what the concerns of city employees are. So some, some people on this council who always talk about residency, about holding people accountable, tonight just showed the hypocrisy. Every time you turn around, it is just that. So hopefully and gratefully, most of you are not going to run again. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson? At this time? Councilman, uh, 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 Blakely? Councilman Blakely?
Yes, I am here. Uh, first greetings. Happy New Year to, uh, everyone, uh, in the city of Trenton for our first city council meeting of the new year. Uh, number one, I'd like to, uh, state that, um, I think it's outrageous that members of the public uh, cannot speak on matters of public import, uh, at a public meeting. I just want to say on the record, I believe, and I've been pretty consistent about this, uh, since my time on council, that, uh, members of the public who pay, uh, taxes and are residents of the city, uh, should be able to speak to, uh, on, in, on any issue that they like at any public city council meeting. And the fact, uh, that longstanding residents are being banned from talking at this meeting is downright shameful and, uh, just absolutely awful. And I hope that is something that, uh, we can change, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, rather, to two thousand and twenty-three, uh, when there's a new council. Because I believe, uh, that people who put us in office should be able to share, uh, their thoughts about anything, even if it's not related to the agenda. What about members who can't participate on Thursday for whatever reason? Uh, we are, uh, not me, uh, my colleagues are basically saying that they don't want to hear what they have to say. And I think that that is, um, very, uh, inappropriate. And I just think it's, um, non-collaborative, and we should be wanting to hear, um, from members who voted for us, uh, for members of the public who voted for us and live here. Um, also, I'd like to, uh, welcome Dr. Adela Lopez, Aings Lopez, uh, to the city of Trenton. Um, I am very happy to see a Trenton native, uh, who has had such a distinguished career in public service already join the city of Trenton. Um, and I'm very pleased to see you, um, in this position, and I look forward, uh, to the confirmation process. Um, you come from a really great family who has already dedicated, uh, much of their lives to public service in the city of Trenton, and I'm very happy to see you continue, uh, your family's, um, legacy of public service, uh, to the city of Trenton. Additionally, um, I am hopeful to see, uh, the budget process start, uh, very shortly. Um, the budget is the most important document, um, that we work on as, um, a city council. It's very important that we get started on that process expeditiously. Um, unfortunately, last fiscal year, we did not have the ability as a council, uh, because of some of my colleagues' decision to, uh, not have a, a budget process, uh, but, or have council hearings for different departments. But, uh, I'm really looking forward to having that budget process and, uh, so that we can start determining the future of our city. That's one of our chief responsibilities as a city council, and I implore city council members, not city council members, I implore the mayor and the V.A. and, and all of those folks to submit, uh, the budget ASAP so that we can get started on it. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have. Oh, last thing, um, I want to discuss very generically, uh, the resolution that I, uh, presented this evening. Um, quite frankly, um, I think it is despicable for my colleagues to not even want to have a conversation about the performance of the employee in question. And I just think that this is another black eye in the cit, for the city of Trenton and for city council specifically. And, um, I am just really concerned that we are not doing our due diligence, uh, that, you know, this council is not having, uh, the appropriate oversight of the employees that we're charged with. And, um, it's another example of, uh, my colleagues, uh, my, most of my colleagues' hypocrisy and lack of interest in really, um, doing their due diligence as a member of this council. It's just my humble opinion, and I'll just say, um, we have two years left and it can't come fast enough for, uh, this city to turn in the leaf and, and hopefully have some people on this council, um, ride off into the sunset and retire. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Um, well, there is, um, a lot to cover and, um, ten minutes is, is never long enough, um, considering this, well, somebody is making a lot of noise, so, uh, um, anyways, ten minutes is, is, is never long enough. But I, I will say what the priority is right now, um, is of course, uh, the situation and the relationship that the city of Trenton has with the state of New Jersey. Um, it's very concerning that here we are, fiscal, fiscal year twenty-one is almost at its conclusion, and the city of Trenton has still not, uh, put forward a budget, um, um, for, for whatever the reason. Uh, yes, the mayor has not introduced it and the council has not even begun to review it. And we have fifteen days to do it, right? So, uh, statutorily, we, we, the budget is due Ju, uh, January fifteenth. So any, any citizen or taxpayers on this call knows what a Herculean task that is to try to complete a municipal budget, a municipal budget by, within, uh, less than two weeks' time. Um, one of the key fact, one of the key components of the budget, which does not, uh, really preclude us, or it's not even a reason why the budget is late, is, uh, is about the level of funding that the state, uh, commits to Trenton. And that has been a ongoing issue, I would say, over the past ten years. Now, we have a couple of veterans on our council, uh, who understands that and, and has been, I, I would, I would guess, have been in the fight for a long time with the, with the governor, with the, with the various governors that we've had, uh, during these, uh, during over the years, and the amount of funding that the state has given, for the lack of. So here we are, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, and the amount of funding that the state wants to give Trenton is just insulting and unacceptable. And in the coming days, uh, yes, our responsibility is to put forward with the budget, but not having a budget does not preclude, uh, the state committing to an amount of funding for our city. The state must constitutionally fund every municipality in the state of New Jersey, and Trenton is no different. But we're hoping that over the next couple of days, we can sit down at the table with, uh, the governor, with the lieutenant governor, uh, to come up with a number that's fair and advantageous and beneficial for the city of Trenton. Um, despite whether or not we're under MOU or not, I, I, I don't, I, I'm all for agreements and oversight so long as the oversight is fair and it has measurable timelines as outline what deficiencies we are supposed to meet. And today, we have not seen any outline from the state of what, where is the government of the city of Trenton deficient? So it's, it's no longer good enough to say, oh, the city of Trenton can't manage themselves and, and they do a poor job. So it's time to really, uh, peel the onion back and give us some granular details as to where are we deficient? Where are we not meet, meeting the mark? And if we're not meeting the mark in any particular area, then the state needs to tell us and help us and work collaboratively to come up with a solution so that the city of Trenton is successful. But the state does, and that's what government does. You know, I've worked in financial services for many, many years. I've worked for the most prestigious global financial institutions in the world, from Solomon Brothers to Citigroup to Bear Stearns. And I can tell you, all of these, uh, organizations have been under government oversight by the Federal Reserve Bank, by the U S Treasury, and anytime the government provides oversight to any entity, it's a collaborative effort. They come in, they review, they tell you what your deficiencies are, and then they give you an opportunity, due process, to come up with, uh, to remediate. And if you don't remediate in those timeframes, then there is a penalty. But the MOU has been punitive to the city of Trenton with none of these deficiencies defined and just no visibility or transparency as to the way forward. So I will be asking, along with hopefully my other council members, you know, for these particulars. And don't, we, we will know, we refuse to be measured by some nebulous, I don't know, some metrics that no one even knows. So, um, that's one of my, uh, cornerstone, um, uh, pieces of advocacy, uh, on this council, that I want to see the city of Trenton to really, uh, become independent and begin to self-govern, no matter who's in office, whether it's this council, uh, Mayor Gus Yore, I don't care, but I care about the city. And the city, and I care about fairness, and it is time that city of Trenton, uh, treated the same way, with the same measuring stick as any other municipality in our state of New Jersey. So that's all that I will say, uh, about that. And the last topic is one, the one issue that I want to address, it's about our council as a body. I think, starting in New Year, I think that we need to move forward in unison, and, and I would like to see us, you know, outline some, um, a, a plan for the city. Have some, a lot of us, you know, we work independently, we have some of our independent efforts, but since I've been on this council, we have not come together as, as a unit and have put forward any, any type of initiative or objectives that we would like to leave, uh, as a legacy for this, uh, body that served from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. So, um, I would like to see that. I know council president have put up a resolution, uh, for police reform and police department and criminal justice reform. I haven't heard anything about that since. I would certainly like to revisit that, considering some of the climate and some issues that we are experiencing current day. Uh, we put up a resolution and we passed for a, a test strategy for COVID, the test plan. One of our citizens helped, uh, define it, and we have not even done any work on that. Uh, so I, with the new health director, hopefully she can take a look at that resolution and come up with a, 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 a plan to implement some of the recommendations that's in that resolution. So, uh, Santiago Rodriguez has put forward a couple resolutions regarding Trenton Waterworks and getting financial, will be over there and, and, uh, consistent financial reporting. So, you know, we want to follow up on these things. So it's not just enough to put a resolution together, right? And, and agree, but we have to really take them seriously and, um, really, uh, move forward, you know, uh, expeditiously to realize, uh, 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 some outcomes and get some of the work done. Uh, so hopefully, uh, I will be working over the next two years to really get some of the work done that we have, um, uh, initiated or put forward in resolution. So I will, I will yield my time and, uh, that's all I have to say for now. Uh, council president, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Council president, I, I hate to interrupt you, but Mr. Bridges, the, uh, the, the law director, the acting law director is actually trying to get your attention, would like to be recognized.
Well, we're, we're into the civic comment and we're going to have this.
I just wanted to.
I, I would like to, um, first, uh, greet everyone, uh, with the Happy New Year and thank God, um, we're here, uh, to, uh, to, to speak. A lot of our family members and friends, um, had to deal with the COVID and the gun violence in our city. And hopefully, uh, this year, we will be able to address the, uh, gun violence in our city, and we will also be able to address the effects that COVID had on our families in the city of Trenton. I, uh, was working with the administration, uh, as far as the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, victims and the gun violent victims to bring in, um, ther, uh, therapists that could address their needs. We'll talk about that, um, more in the upcoming meetings to find out exactly how those families are faring and making sure that we were able to meet some of their needs from the, uh, the stress of the COVID and, um, the, uh, virtual learning process and the whole, uh, piece of that COVID, the, um, different, uh, uh, components that affect our families. And I would also like to, um, ask the police director if she could tell me, um, not tonight, but she can email me in reference to the packages that are being delivered into the clerk's office. Those packages, um, has been, uh, deemed as a gag, and I don't take any type of liberty for someone saying that they're delivering gag packages when there are young women in our office that have families, children, that we must protect. I would definitely like to know, um, what is being done about the person that has taken it upon themselves to send those packages to the clerk's office, placing our, uh, staff in the office at risk. Um, the, uh, director can get back with me with that. I, I do need some answers to that. And I also want to talk about the budget. The budget is one of the most important roles the council has, and normally, the budget should be introduced in August. There is no reason whatsoever that this council has not had the opportunity to look at a budget book. The administration is the, this administration is the only municipality in the state of New Jersey that has not introduced a budget to the council. The council doesn't have a budget book. This is unheard of, and I am just asking Mr. Cruz, the business administrator, the one that should be bringing that budget to us, and, and, and the mayor. You need to introduce that budget to this body. We need to begin the process because we have to go line by line in that budget to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And we cannot do that if there is no introduction. So again, I am asking the administration to at least get us some, the budget, uh, books, and we can start from there. Because if you wait until January the fifteenth and place this onus on the council, we would have to ask for an extension from D C A. Those budget books should be in our hands. They should have been in our hands. And so, uh, I'm appealing to the administration to get that done. I'm also looking forward to having a conversation with all of our stakeholders in reference to this budget, um, in a, a later day this week. And again, I thank each and every one of you for coming to this meeting. Your opinion matters. I hope to see you on Thursday, and I thank all of the direct, all of the directors and my colleagues for coming out. Thank you so much, Mr. Collins, and I move to close the civic comment. Second.
A motion to close second civic comment, uh, and a second by Councilman Caldwell Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, ma'am.
A motion to adjourn by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council President McBride. All in favor, do adjourn.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned at six fifteen P M. Everybody have a blessed evening. Thank you.